All right. Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock on October ninth, twenty October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to note for the record, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access, pursuant to Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-two and all other applicable laws temporarily amended to certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at this time. Okay, seeing none. I would note for the record that Select Board members in attendance this evening are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Doesn't look like any other boards or committees have a quorum this evening. Let me turn to our MC. The town administrator is going to MC tonight's presentation. Let me turn it over to Tom Mayo. Thanks, Tom.
Great. Thank you very much, Bill. Okay, so I'll let Art bring up the presentation. Terrific. Thank you very much, Art. Okay, welcome, everyone, and thank you all for coming to our second public information session to discuss two projects: a new public elementary school and a new public safety facility. A quick note on process. We have a lot to get through tonight, so I think it would be best if we hold all questions until the end of the presentation. If you have questions, feel free to type them into the chat box, or simply raise your hand, and we'll call, and when we call for questions at the end of the presentation, we'll call on you. So tonight is intended to give the community a thorough understanding of these two proposed construction projects. To do that, we have invited a number of people from varying roles within town government. We have folks from the building committees, architects, department heads, the Select Board and School Committee that will help walk us through the issues being put before the town. At the end of the, at the end of the discussion tonight, our goal is that you all leave here with a full understanding of the projects and their impacts on both your tax bills and municipal operations. Slide. So our agenda tonight will walk us through these four categories. Slide. And slide. So as I mentioned, tonight you will hear about both the proposed public safety facility, which would be the new police headquarters, and the North Fire Station located, which would be located at three thirty-five Lincoln Street, and the new Foster Elementary School to be rebuilt on the existing site on Downer Ave. Slide. Now we'll get into our programmatic needs and design proposals portion of the presentation. Slide. And I'll turn it over now to Fire Chief Steve Murphy to walk us through the North Fire Station.
Good evening, and thank you, Tom. People ask why a new fire station now. In my presentation, I'll explain why. On the screen, you can see a picture of Station Two, which was built in nineteen forty-one and is located at two thirty North Street. This is the station we're discussing relocating. Slide. Some brief history on this particular project. The town has been working to address the fire department station needs for many years. Specifically, this project began ten years ago with a feasibility study, followed by the formation of a fire start, fire station building committee in two thousand and fifteen. Ultimately, the committee and Select Board recognized that the current building and location were not viable for renovation. This decision led the committee to analyze our current and projected call volume and identified the three A quarter as the best option. Subsequently, the town did a feasibility study and purchased the land at three thirty-five Lincoln Street. Slide. From the fire department perspective, we have three major areas in why the current station doesn't meet our needs and why a new station would better, better serve the department and community. The first is size. There have been many changes in the fire service since the current building was built, including changes in our equipment and mission. The vehicles have gotten larger and heavier. Unfortunately, we can't keep the same amount of apparatus at the station as we used to be able to. Another example is there weren't any female firefighters in nineteen forty-one, and fire departments weren't providing EMS. The physical layout of the building wasn't designed for either. Slide. The second major concern with the current building is safety. The leading cause of death for firefighters is cardiac disorder. As you can see in this slide, the picture on the left is our, what our current exercise facilities look like at Station Two. This wellness center was a modified janitor slash storage slash entrance room, and we had to turn it into a very crowded fitness room. Slide. The second leading cause of death for firefighters is cancer. Over the last twenty years, there's been an increased awareness that when firefighters respond to calls, their equipment, including uniforms and turnout gear, is exposed to carcinogens and other hazardous chemicals. Modern stations are designed to minimize that exposure when they return to the station. Unfortunately, the current building doesn't allow that. You can see in the picture on the left how crowded the gear room is versus what a modern station would look like on the right. Slide. The final major concern is the building infrastructure itself. As I mentioned, the current building was built in nineteen forty-one and has only had minimal upgrades. And you can, as you can see in this photo, the heating system, electrical, plumbing are all original. In summary, we need the new station now because the current building is too small for modern operations, does not adequately support firefighter health and safety, and has the original infrastructure, heat, electrical, plumbing, and roof, all over eighty years old. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. Now I'll turn it over to Police Chief David Jones to walk us through the, to walk us through the existing police headquarters.
Great. Thanks very much, Tom. So good evening, everybody. I'm going to briefly walk through some key areas of concern with our current police station. Hingham urgently needs a new police station, not only for our dedicated employees, but also for the members of our community who rely on the services that we provide. I will show why Hingham needs a modern police facility and why we need it now. Our station was never designed for our purpose. It was a school. It doesn't support modern policing because it's too small. It has inadequate storage and locker space and discourages private interviews. Our functions were placed into the available spaces like a game of Tetris trying to line up all the pieces. The result is awkward, cramped, and often unsafe. This slide here shows our public entrance. It's difficult to see and for the public to find, especially at night. Next slide, please. In nineteen ninety-eight, we ran out of space the day that we moved into our current facility. Yet in two thousand and eleven, we gave up a substantial piece of our station to help build out the new regional dispatch facility. Next slide, please. The photo on the left shows what was first designed as a holding area. Out of necessity, it was changed into storage for our motorcycles, vehicle maintenance equipment, and supplies. The photo on the right shows a staff entrance, which is now used as open and unsecured storage. Slide, please. This room was first designed as the roll call room where shift briefings are held. Now it serves many other needs, such as our only training space, our officers' meal area, our community room, a backup space for interviews, and the only area in our station where we can hold non-status offenders. If the room is being used for any one reason, it cannot be used for any of the other functions. The photo on the left shows the records area where the public comes in to get copies of vaccine and incident reports. It's a converted employee entrance where the public is forced to interact with our staff through a mail slot in the public stairway, creating a public space to discuss sensitive and private information. The photo on the right shows our armory, which in this photo has most of its equipment out for a training day. There is no proper search weapons, ammunition, and training gear. There is also no ventilation or plumbing needed for cleaning weapons and equipment, creating a safety risk to our staff. These photos show our locker rooms, which are far too small and were not designed for public safety personnel. We cannot provide lockers for our twenty-five part-time officers, nor can we support any more female staff in the locker rooms. Officers must store their gear on top of lockers, under benches, and in common areas throughout the station. These photos show our staff and department vehicle parking areas. There are twenty-one parking spaces for twenty-three department vehicles. At shift change, both the incoming and outgoing officers' personal vehicles must be parked in the driveway, making two-way travel impossible and dangerous in emergency situations. There is one garage bay that cannot accommodate an ambulance, and it's also used for storage, creating a safety risk when entering that area with an arrestee. These photos show our cramped office spaces. There is no room for growth. The bottom photo is a small office which hosts our two licensing officers, fail control officer, our mental health clinician, and our domestic violence advocate. So this slide here shows our public lobby area. You can see there's no privacy for anyone wanting to speak with an officer confidentially about a crime or other sensitive matter, and we have no other private interview space available. This is also the same area that detainees are released into, with a serious safety concern when a victim or a witness to the arrested person's offense is waiting in that same lobby area. But thank you for your attention, and my staff and I will be able to answer questions that you may have at the end of the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Now we'll turn it over to Donna Smallwood from the Public Safety Facility Building Committee to walk us through the proposed new design.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everyone. The chief spoke to the why of this project. Let me speak to the how. What we have now are woefully undersized facilities that, that are not configured for modern police and firefighting services. Our proposal for the November first special town meeting and for the ballot on November eighth is for a combined public safety facility, which would move the North Fire Station and police into one optimally located building. Let me clarify that the police, that the fire operation will be a substation, and, and fire headquarters will remain at Central Street. Police operations are, are all in, in one location, and they will move from Town Hall to this new facility. Slide, please. What we propose is a modern lease fire complex that will realize both operational and cost-saving efficiencies. It'll work better not only for our staff, but for the public as well. We can achieve cost savings by locating two departments in one building, so we only need one building lobby. We only need one set of, of building support infrastructure. But the design also includes some shared facilities, a shared training space and a shared exercise space that will help our public safety team maintain their health and enhance their skills. The bunk rooms are designed with appropriate privacy for both male and female firefighters who both work and live in this building. And it has sized and configured, configured spaces conducive to effective public safety work, providing private meeting spaces for our officers to work with family members and victims on confidential police matters. I did a little research. When we built the North Fire Station in nineteen forty-one, we were, our population was eight thousand folks. When the police moved into what had been our middle school in nineteen ninety-seven, we were about twenty thousand folks. That means that today's population of twenty-four thousand is three times our nineteen forty's size and a twenty percent increase even over when the police moved into their current facilities. We think the proposed new building will meet both current needs and the needs of our community over the next fifty-plus years that we expect to be the building's life. So let's speak specifically about the proposal. Public, the Public Safety Facility Building Committee hired Castle Blue's Associates, a design firm with deep experience in Massachusetts building police and fire facilities, and we hired Hill International as our owner's project manager. That owner's project manager is our technical eyes on the project, enhancing our local expertise. At the beginning, building committee members visited other communities that had built police and fire stations so that we could learn what worked for them and maybe what hadn't worked as well. Over sixty-plus meetings in three years, we've worked intensively with the chiefs to understand their programmatic needs, and based on those needs, driven by those needs, we've designed, redesigned, refined design, redesigned and refined again. And over the course of that effort, reduced the building's size thirteen percent from its original proposal. So let's take a look at what we're proposing. Slide, please. Here, here we are, standing on Essington Street. Our backs are to the commuter boat parking area, and to the right, just out of the view, is Fresh Market. This is our three-story, fourth forty-nine thousand square foot proposed public safety facility. This is its public entrance. That, that door in the center is the, is where I will call when I need to meet with Chief Jones or Chief Murphy. In this view, what's on the left is in general police department operations, and on the right, fire department operations. In fact, those windows in the upper right corner are the firefighters bunk rooms. The, the building has an industrial feel that we think echoes the shipyard's storied past. Its brick at the bottom sort of anchors the, the, the building to the site, and what appears gray in this illustration is, is metal panels. Throughout, the designer is specifying energy efficient materials appropriate not only to this building's use, but to its location close to the water. Slide, please. So walk with me now around the corner. Now we're standing in the median at Route three A, and we're looking at what appears from this side of the building to be a two-story building, and that's because the, the site slopes up so dramatically. From this side, the building is dominated by the five apparatus bays that are critical to Chief Murphy and his team. Because those five bays mean that all four trucks and ambulances assigned to this substation have immediate access to Route three, three A, when an emergency occurs. The area to the right is police operations, and there are windows in that part of the building that we just can't see from that, from this angle. Let me speak for just a minute to the schedule. We've completed feasibility and the first two design phases for this building, and we learned as of last week at our Public Safety Facility Building Committee meeting that we're seventy percent of the way through the pre-construction bid document phase. With our neighbor's support in November, this project will be ready to bid in early twenty twenty-three with an anticipated occupation in twenty twenty-four in the fall. Slide, please. Now we've come back around the corner, and we are standing at the corner of Essington and Shipyard. From, from this perspective, in the foreground is, is the more public part of the, the, the site. We're standing in the public parking area. That brick area that, that protrudes out from the building in the foreground is the training facility, and you can see in the, in the far background, Fresh Market. Our budget request as we come to special town meeting will be forty-six point seven million dollars to both construct and outfit this building, its last phase. On the operations side of things, only one new hire is anticipated in, in connection with this project, and that's a custodian will help us maintain our investment in this building. I'd like to take a quick minute to tip my hat to my colleagues on the Public Safety Building Committee. We've worked hard to develop a proposal of which we're proud and which we think will serve our community well. Our Chair Bob Garrity, Vice Chair Paul Healy, and members Joe Kelly, Tally Louder, Bruce McEloney, and Andy Crochet, along with Chiefs Jones, Murphy, and their lieutenants, who have been with us every step of the way. It really has been a pleasure to work together. Slide, please. Let me take a minute to speak to the building's energy efficiency. We worked with the planning board and Hingham Net Zero on this aspect of the building. We bring you an electric building, ninety-seven percent electric, with only one small area, the apparatus bay heated by gas, because the technology isn't quite there yet to deal with the rapid energy loss and need to replace it quickly when you open those massive apparatus bays. The flat roof of the building is both designed and will be built solar-ready with the infrastructure in place, making it easier to install solar panels in the future. Design includes eight electric vehicle charging stations for both our public safety team and for public use, with the infrastructure in place throughout the entire site to add charging stations in the future. Throughout, the specifications are for energy efficient heating and roofing systems. The insulation exceeds energy codes, and long-lasting building materials, all contributing to energy efficiency. The result is a green building that will help Hingham meet its environmental goals. In conclusion, four previous town meetings have supported this project through its design phases. A yes from our neighbors in November will get it built. We see this as one right-sized building, meeting the critical needs of two departments, both police and fire. A win-win-win, and our next speaker will speak to that third win. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Now, Select Board Member Joe Fisher will talk about some of the tertiary benefits of the Public Safety Facility.
Thank you, Tom, and thanks to the other speakers who really did a great job explaining how the proposed public safety facility will greatly enhance the delivery of fire, police, and emergency medical services for years to come. But I want to turn to a different topic, namely what opportunities will be available to the town after the fire department vacates the North Fire Station and after the police department moves out of Town Hall and into the new public safety facility building. So turning first to the fire department. Once the North Fire Station is vacated, the town will be considering several possibilities for the building's next use. One possibility is to consider how the site can be used to support education and training opportunities, such as the Traces Program that is offered by the high school. Traces stands for Teaching Regionalized Approach to Career Employment Skills. The program used to be housed in a building in Bear Cove Park. The program is currently in need of a new home, and the North Fire Station building may be a possibility. A second option the town will be evaluating is whether we should lease or sell the property, which has the possibility of generating funds to meet other capital needs of the town. Turning next to the police department, moving police headquarters out of its present location at Town Hall will allow the town to move forward with its plan to address the needs of our senior center, which is also housed at Town Hall. Expanding the senior center has been a town priority for several years. In two thousand and twenty, our town meeting created a senior center building committee, which has been working on this issue and developing plans for expanding the senior center. After the police are kicked out of Town Hall, we will be exploring the possibility of tripling the size of the senior center by adding an additional fifteen thousand square feet. Once the town approves moving forward with the public safety facility building, the senior center building committee will be able to proceed with its work and make its recommendations for expanding the senior center. An additional benefit to moving the police department out of Town Hall is that it will result in the removal of about fifty official and personal Hingham Police Department vehicles being removed from the Town Hall parking area. Many of us know firsthand that parking can be tight at Town Hall, so making more parking spaces available will be a real benefit to our seniors and to those who access facilities and programs at Town Hall. And finally, I want to comment on one additional benefit of the Public Safety Facility Building, which is also a benefit of a new foster school, and that benefit goes to the town's efforts to recruit staff. Today, the Town of Hingham is in fierce competition with other communities to find the best, most capable staff for our police, our fire department, and for our schools. The new Public Safety Facility Building and a new foster school will assist us in our recruitment efforts. Those buildings will be a clearly visible demonstration of Hingham's, Hingham's commitment to providing a high level of service and support to our residents and to our staff. These projects will be a testament to the value we place on our residents, our students, and the professionals who have committed to working in our community. Back to you, Tom.
Thank you, Joe. Now I will turn it over to Ray Estes, who is the Vice Chair of the School Building Committee and his team to walk us through matters related to the foster school.
Great. Thanks, Tom, and good evening, everybody. Appreciate everyone joining us this evening. Some really important information about the upcoming town meeting and ballot election. So Foster School, we've been working on a project for several years now. Our group has been together for five years, over five years, and we're really excited to be at this point. What you're looking at in this first image is what we envision as the design for the new elementary school, and we'd like to share some details about the project and the reasons why we pursued it. Slide, please. So just some broad strokes of the new project building. This, this is designed to be a three-story, one hundred and twenty-six thousand square foot elementary school that will serve kindergarten through fifth grade and a design enrollment that was set by the MSBA to accommodate future growth of six hundred and five students. It will also serve up to one hundred and fifty pre-kindergarten students with the expansion of the integrated preschool program that's currently housed at East Elementary. It will also accommodate district-wide programs and various community uses. Slide. We're really grateful to be working on this project, and I just wanted to mention this group that I've had the pleasure and honor to work with for many of them for over five years. Our School Building Committee is a very talented, very dedicated group. Linda Hill, our Chair, Chris Mercer, our Secretary, Michelle Eyre, who also happens to serve as the Chair of the School Committee at the moment, Kevin Lynch, Jen Murphy, and Tim O'Neill have joined me in this effort. New Superintendent Margaret Adams, Ayesha Apang, the new Director of Business and Support Services, and Matt Sheffley, the Foster School Principal currently, round out the group, really dedicated, spending many nights working on this project, and we have a very talented project team. Last year, we were very pleased to bring aboard PMA Consultants as our OPM, Owner's Project Manager, similar to the Public Safety Project role, and Raymond Design Associates as our architect. And just a shout out to those two firms, Gene Raymond of RDA and Chris Carroll of PMA are both Hingham residents and have a personal stake in this project, and we've really enjoyed working with them thus far. Slide, please. So why are we doing this? You're looking at the existing foster school. This school is really at the end of its useful life. Slide, please. Just some basic facts about the existing school. It was built in fifty-one, a couple of additions in fifty-seven and seventy-four, some renovations in the late two thousands. It's a seventy-one thousand, almost seventy-two thousand square foot school, and as I said, reached, really reached the end of its useful life. And the site, while a thirty-nine acre site, only about seven acres are able to be developed, and most of the school sits on what will be a future floodplain. So obviously a concern for future development. Slide, please. So why we're doing this is there are a couple of key problems that have plagued the foster a couple of key problems that have plagued the foster school community for many years. And this is not new information. There are major deficiencies that 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 school community faces on a daily basis. And they really fall into two major categories, aging and failing mechanical and electrical systems and undersized and inadequate educational spaces. Slide please. So let's talk about some of those deficiencies. First, with respect to the mechanical systems. The building systems are original from the early nineteen fifty's. The boiler, the steam pipe distribution infrastructure, the electrical systems, other mechanical systems as well. There are frequent malfunctions and need for repairs, which are increasingly difficult to make and costly as well. With the heating system, it's very difficult to control the temperature on a regular basis. With respect to the electrical system is extremely outdated. And because of many leaks that occur in the steam pipe distribution system, some of those electrical panels have become corroded and are in need of repair on a regular basis. With the space, with respect to space issues, a lot of the classrooms and other spaces are undersized and inadequate to deliver the curriculum. There's no ability to hold an all-school event or meeting unless it's held outside. There is no space in the building which can accommodate the entire student body. Spaces that are designed for other uses are often used for storage and prep work and things like that by teachers. The undersized gymnasium cafeteria requiring six lunch periods. And really, the building as a whole operates in a manner that consumes a lot of energy and is becoming increasingly more costly to maintain. Slide please. So here is an example of the aging and failing electrical system that, as you can see, has been corroding over time. Slide please. Here are some photos of underneath the crawl space, some of the steam pipe distribution infrastructure that is in less than good shape. Many of these pipes have been replaced and repaired over the last several years. Very costly repairs and increasingly difficult to make. Slide please. So as I mentioned, there are a number of spaces that are really inadequate and deficient. On the left, you're seeing a picture of the gymnasium. This gymnasium, unlike the other elementary schools, doesn't have a wood floor, can't accommodate a regular-sized basketball game or other games that require a larger space. On the right is a photo of space that's kind of used by teachers for storage and meetings, which is not really what it's intended for. The cafeteria, as I mentioned, is so small that while normally there are two lunch periods in elementary school of this size, in foster, they hold six lunch periods, starting at ten forty-five in the morning. Slide please. Here's an example of one of the several classrooms that does not have natural light, lacks windows, and really a lack of proper ventilation. As a result, ceiling fans have been installed to try to help with that situation. Slide please. Here's another example of some of the interior classrooms that don't have direct corridor access. Students actually have to travel through one occupied classroom to access another, which can be very disruptive for young children during their lessons. Slide please. So what's our solution to these problems? And these problems have been going on for decades. They're not new problems. But finally, we were fortunate enough to be able to kind of move forward with a project in partnership with the MSBA, and we're really excited about what we're envisioning in terms of design for this project. So as I mentioned, a compact three-story design. It's going to be energy efficient, as Gene Raymond, our architect, will speak to in a few minutes. And we'll have lower projected operating costs. And really, in terms of the location, it's going to be constructed behind the existing school while the existing school is occupied, set well off the street, and that will minimize its impact on the neighborhood, both visually and logistically. Slide please. So how did we get here? You know, as Donna mentioned, there were four town meeting votes with respect to the Public Safety Building. Likewise, we've been to town meeting many times on this project. But really, this began in two thousand and six when a master plan, looking at school facilities, identified for the first time in writing a need for really a replacement of the Foster Elementary School for the various reasons that I've mentioned. Followed by twenty seventeen, the formation of our School Building Committee and the first appropriation of feasibility funds, even before invitation to the MSBA was forthcoming. That invitation came in late twenty nineteen, followed by some additional funds that were appropriated in twenty twenty when we learned that a school of the size that we needed to design was likely to cost more in terms of feasibility exploration to do so. And we wanted to make sure that there were sufficient funds, and town meeting was gracious enough to provide those funds in another appropriation. And just this last spring, interim funding to get us through design development and to town meeting that's upcoming in less than two weeks. Slide please. So I'd now like to turn it over to Superintendent Margaret Adams to talk about really how we started this design process, which was really an educational plan.
So the new elementary school building project began first with an educational plan. The plan outlines what we know students will need in order to provide for a twenty-first century education. As you see on the slide, the focus on the educational plan was to provide for learner-student-centered instruction at its heart. Spaces will provide for inquiry and real-world learning. They will allow for multidisciplinary learning. The focus on the plan was to provide for the space needs where students can come together, work collaboratively in neighborhoods to include current and between grade levels. Design include enhanced outdoor spaces that will allow the strengthening of our students' understanding of the environment, including the creation of an outdoor classroom. As you've heard, there are no spaces that allow for the whole school to come together. The new school provides for a space for the whole school to join in presentations that include arts, music, and cultural events. Slide. You'll see in this slide the floor plan of the first floor that includes neighborhoods for each grade level where classes that can come together for projects and community building. The plan includes for natural light in all spaces, which we know provides for a better learning environment for our students. The plan also provides for small group spaces that will allow us to meet the varied needs of our students. The cafeteria will provide for multiple classes to have lunch and as well as provide a space for educational and whole-school presentations. The students, in the wider community, will benefit from a right-sized gymnasium that will also include bleachers. This will serve both the community and the students. Will be able to provide specific music spaces that will help us support our band and chorus programs. Again, the outdoor spaces will allow us to make connections to the outside and learn environment. In addition, we'll be able to expand the district's pre-K program. Right now, we do not have enough space to provide for the needs of all of our early learners, especially those with special needs. This program would allow the schools to develop a comprehensive early childhood program that would meet the needs of families and those in the community. Slide. This is a view of the floor plans for the second and third floor. It gives you an insight into the spaces. You'll see the neighborhoods for each grade level that again will allow for that grade level, cross-grade level collaboration that focus on inquiry-based and multidisciplinary learning that we know will be the heart of twenty-first century learning. As you heard, we have limited, we're limited in our spaces to provide for small group instruction to meet the needs for students. As you'll see in the slide and the floor plan, the educational plan provides for these small group instructional spaces to meet the varied needs of our learners. Slide. The educational plan also provides specific spaces to help the district meet the needs of our students with disabilities. As a district, we're currently struggling to have adequate spaces that support the creation of in-district-specific special ed programs. Plan allows for these two specific educational programs where we will benefit from having all our students with special needs as members of our school community. The educational plan outlined two specific programs, one to meet the needs of students with social-emotional needs and those in need of an intensive language-based program. Slide.
Great, thanks, Margaret. Just a word about the site plan. So what you're looking at is really how the property is going to be laid out when it's redeveloped. You're looking at the new school shape, which is set behind the existing school. The existing school actually exists now where the parking lot and the softball field are shown on this site plan. This design meets the school's programmatic needs. You know, really importantly, it gets parent cars off the street, improves traffic safety in the neighborhood, and really improves the traffic flow and reduces congestion, which exists now and has for many years. This design solves the issue, we believe, with respect to future floodplain level and sea level rise fifty years into the future that's been projected by raising the school up and setting it back against Otis Hill. And this is an opportunity to utilize really wonderful natural resources and attributes and incorporate those into the curriculum. And also enables energy savings, because the building is going to be facing south directly into the sun most of the day, which will reduce the need for artificial light. Slide please. Some additional benefits to the school, in addition to serving you know, many of the attributes we've talked about, will serve the foster school community and, you know, help support the delivery of the curriculum in that building. But also adding or expanding to the integrated pre-kindergarten program from east over to this new building will serve a growing need in town with new and younger families moving into town, having more children. We're excited to be able to expand this very popular program that we haven't been able to expand due to lack of space. The Kids in Action Program, also very popular, and space is high in demand for that. And this will enable us to use the multipurpose room that will be located on the first floor to serve the Kids in Action Program as one of the spaces it'll utilize. That multipurpose space will also serve as the home for the Field Science Program, which we're very excited about, using not only to service the foster community, but the rest of the elementary schools in town as well. A full-size gymnasium, as we've talked about, a cafeteria, which will not only allow fewer lunch periods, but will have a two-way stage, enabling use for that facility for all-school meetings, special events, plays, musical events as well. This is potentially a storm shelter for use by the town in the event of inclement weather. And as Gene will talk about, you know, the green design features are really going to reduce energy and operating costs over time. Slide please. Now I'd like to turn it over to Gene Raymond, Principal Architect, to talk about some of the sustainable design features and our project schedule.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ray. I think you guys have done a great job explaining the project so far, so congratulations on that. Like the Public Safety Building, this new school is going to be exceedingly green and very efficient to operate. We've taken a cut through the building here because it shows a number of things all at once. The first thing you want to do when you're trying to lower operating costs and frankly, save energy, is make the building envelope very robustly insulated. So, you know, the typical new home that feels like it's very insulated has an R thirty roof and an R twenty wall. This will have an R sixty roof, that's the insulating value, and an R forty in all the walls. All the doors, all the windows will be triple-pane glass. As Ray mentioned, the building is facing south, so we can take advantage of the solar gain to reduce heating costs during the winter. And then we've shown solar shading on the south facade so that we can actually cut the amount of sun that comes into the building during the summer, thereby reducing cooling costs. Both Ray and the Superintendent mentioned one of the deficiencies at Foster, one of the big ones is that there are a number of classrooms that don't even have windows for a view to the outside. And that does have a direct impact on test scores, as has been proven in various, many different studies throughout the years. So we're making a big effort to bring natural light down into the center of the building, as is shown within the yellow oval running up and down the middle of the building. There are, we're using every inch of this building, including many of the corridor spaces, as learning spaces. So the building's very efficient from that standpoint, and we want to make sure we're bringing natural light down into those spaces. Beyond that, every classroom will have tall windows and a lot of natural light, which again impacts learning in a very positive way. The building will not have a gas service, it will not have oil tanks. It will be an all-electric building. And we are doing air-source heat pumps as a base bid, which has an incredibly efficient operating cost scenario. But we're also, if the budgeting allows for it during the bidding period, we may actually be doing ground source, which is a series of wells, the most energy-efficient heating and cooling system possible. I like, I was amazed, frankly, but the difference between operating this building, which is much larger than the existing and the existing, this building is going to be less expensive to operate, even though it's fifty thousand square feet larger. And obviously, that's going to benefit the town year after year after year, because you're not going to have to have annual costs for heating and cooling. The last thing is, like the police station, this building is going to be outfitted so that it is ready for solar panels on the roof. We're also running conduits out into the parking lot in case, in the future, another group thinks that providing solar canopies out in the parking lot would be appropriate. So there's been a huge emphasis on making this building green and efficient and inexpensive to operate. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to touch on the project schedule because we've worked hard to maintain the building committee's goal of opening this school in September of twenty twenty-four, which sounds like it's a ways off, but actually, it's really around the corner when you think about it. Next week, we are actually bidding the first phase of this project. It will not be awarded unless there are successful votes at town meeting and the ballot vote. But we want to be in position to start work on the site, raising the building up and doing other work before we get to the second and doing other work before we get to the second package in April, which is the actual construction of the building. And the reason we're doing that again is to maintain an aggressive construction schedule that'll get people into the building as soon as possible. So occupancy, as I mentioned, is planned for September twenty twenty four. And then as Ray had mentioned, the existing building is in the location where the parking lot, the future parking lot and the softball field are planned. So after the kids are in school, then we'll go on to the last phase of the project, which is taking down the existing building and finishing off the site work. So next slide please.
Thank you, Gene. Just finish up with, you know, maybe the bad news, but it's the reality. So the project budget for this, and this, we use the phrase total project budget, that's kind of a term of art that we use because that's what the MSBA language dictates and what they have approved. The board meeting at the end of August, the MSBA approved this project. We subsequently submitted design development plans. And this was the budget that was approved at that meeting at the end of August. So this is the number that will go to town meeting, one hundred and thirteen million, three thirty five, seven forty nine. It includes, you know, a breakdown of hard and soft costs, both for construction, demolition, the site work, expenses, furniture fixtures and equipment, FFNE, we call that, as well as including contingency monies that are available as needed. Slide please. So working with the MSBA, the benefit of working with the MSBA is that the MSBA will give us a grant. In this case, the grant has been set at approximately twenty five and a half million dollars based on a project budget of a hundred and thirteen million and change as set forth here. Our base reimbursement rate of thirty six point eight nine is augmented by a maintenance credit and a two percent sustainability green schools credit. As Gene mentioned, this school is filled with you know, green elements that will save money over time and help to operate the school in a very efficient and environmentally friendly way. We expect to earn LEED Silver Certification with this building, similar to the middle school. And we're excited about a complete and total reimbursement percentage of forty point five four percent from the MSBA. As I mentioned, the expected grant from the MSBA is about twenty five and a half million dollars. The reality is that there are some items that the MSBA does not cover, does not pay for, they deem ineligible for reimbursement, and they also have caps and thresholds for those items in the budget and in the project that they will only reimburse so much. That includes a cost, a construction cost cap at three sixty a square foot, site construction costs, an allocation for FFNE, as I mentioned, and a soft cost cap as well. In the event that we are able to install solar panels on the roof, the MSB unfortunately does not participate in reimbursing for those. But we still feel that those would be a really sound investment for the town if we are able to include them in the project. Slide please. So I just want to end on this note, this is a rendering from our architect, this is a view looking from three A from the Broad Cove area. We're excited about this project. We've been looking a long time on this, there are many people who have spent thousands of hours on this, and I'd like to just mention a few past administrators who have retired and moved on, who played integral roles in this project. Dorothy Gallo, the former superintendent, John Ferris, who served for eleven years as the Business Director of the School Department, and Jamie Laboue, who was very involved and integral in developing the educational plan last spring. And I'd like to give a particular mention and shout out to past building committee member and a dear friend, Ed Schreier, who worked with us for three years. And we're very grateful for his contributions during that time. We thank you for your time this evening. We really look forward to seeing everyone at town meeting on November first and and hopefully we can move forward with both of these projects. Thanks very much.
Great, thank you very much, Ray. So now we will discuss the financing plan for these projects. And our Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, Michelle Montseger, will take us through that analysis.
Thank you, Tom. So there are many considerations that went into developing the financial plan for these large capital projects. We understand that this is a significant investment for the town. As this slide shows, the total cost for the new elementary school is a hundred and thirteen million, as Ray mentioned. And this is being offset by a sizable grant of twenty five million dollars from the MSBA. The town expects to borrow approximately eighty eight million dollars to complete the new school. For the new public safety facility, we expect to borrow about forty eight million dollars. So that comes to a total anticipated borrowing of about a hundred and thirty six million for both projects. Given the size of the projects, the town plans to use a debt exclusion to finance the new facilities. A debt exclusion is a temporary property tax increase to fund specific capital projects. Slide please. We've tried to structure the financing plan to mitigate the tax impact on residents to the extent possible. First, the town secured a twenty five million dollar state grant, as Ray explained, to support the school project. And this directly reduces the cost of rebuilding Foster to taxpayers. Second, we're proposing to use seven million dollars from unassigned fund balance, which is the town's savings account, to offset the tax impact in the early years of debt service when we expect debt service costs to peak. This again directly reduces the cost of these projects to Hingham taxpayers. In addition, the town has maintained the highest credit rating possible from all three major credit rating agencies for the last twenty years. Our AAA rating gives us access to the lowest interest rates available in the market, again helping to minimize costs. Given the size of the projects, we plan to spread out repayment of the debt over a thirty year period to make it as affordable for residents as possible on an annual basis. Thirty years is the maximum allowed by the state, and it's the term that most communities are using for large building projects. Finally, and Liz will speak to this more in a minute, the town offers over twelve different property tax exemptions and relief programs. And we're making a concerted effort to get the word out about those resources so that the folks in town who need them the most can take advantage of them. Slide please. So using current interest rate projections provided by the town's financial advisors, assuming we're borrowing for both projects over thirty years and applying the seven million dollars from unassigned fund balance that I mentioned, this chart shows the estimated tax impact on residents. We're showing three different assessed property values here, as you can see in the different columns. The twenty fifth percentile, which is about five hundred fifty two thousand, the median property value of about seven hundred and forty thousand, and the seventy fifth percentile, which is just over a million dollars. At each level, what we're showing here is the average annual increase for the first ten years of debt service, which is FY twenty four through FY thirty three. If we look at the median assessed property value of about seven hundred and forty thousand, the middle column here, we estimate that the average property tax increase for both projects combined would be about five hundred ninety two dollars per year for those first ten years. If you're in the twenty fifth percentile, it drops to about four hundred forty one dollars per year on average. And if you're in the seventy fifth percentile, it rises to about eight hundred twenty four dollars per year on average. We also show here in the gray boxes at the bottom of the table the estimated impact of a potential four point nine million dollar operating override. Obviously, this has not been discussed or decided yet. It's something that will be considered as part of annual town meeting this coming spring, but we wanted to be transparent and make sure that people were aware. Slide please. I know this one's hard to read in Zoom, but for anyone looking for more granular tax impact data, we've posted a table on our town meeting website that shows ten years of tax estimates by year for those three different levels of assessed values. I know it's tricky to read, but it is available on our website and you can contact our office as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Michelle. Now I'll turn it over to Select Board Member Liz Klein to take us through the work of the Sustainable Budget Task Force and how that work informs these projects.
Great, thanks so much, Tom. The Sustainable Budget Task Force was created in September twenty twenty one. It's comprised of the following members. Select Board, School Committee, Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, School Business Manager, School Superintendent, and Former Advisory Committee Chair. The Sustainable Budget Task Force reviewed detailed economic, demographic, and financial information to meet its charge of developing options to facilitate a sustainable five year financial forecast for the town for the fiscal years twenty twenty three through twenty twenty seven. Part of the task force work focused on assessing the impact increased taxes and fees will have on taxpayers and residents, including the tax impact of debt exclusions related to large capital projects under consideration. The task force looked at how Hingham compares to our nineteen benchmark communities in terms of several tax indicators to better understand if we're aligned in terms of tax bills. I'm going to share a few of these data points this evening. The complete report can be found on the town website. The task force looked at average single family tax bills across the benchmark communities. Hingham remains in the middle, at the number eleven spot. This graph shows the projected FY twenty six average single family tax bill with both Foster School and the Public Safety Facility debt exclusion projects and a four point nine million dollar override included. As you can see, Hingham still remains around the middle of our benchmark communities. Please keep in mind that this is a conservative estimate because it assumes that all other benchmark towns have not had any tax increases in the form of debt exclusions or operational overrides, simply because we don't have that data. The task force looked at average single family tax bills as a percentage of Department of Revenue income per capita across the twenty benchmark communities. On this measure, Hingham lands on the low end in the number seventeen spot. While per capita income is an imperfect metric, since extremely high earners can pull the average upwards, this indicator does point to some capacity to absorb tax increases relative to our peer communities. We also looked back fifteen years to see how income per capita and average single family tax bills have trended in Hingham. As shown here, the average single family tax bill in Hingham increased sixty nine percent between two thousand eight and twenty twenty two, while income per capita grew by a hundred six percent. Throughout that fifteen year period, Hingham average single family tax bills trended just below the average of the nineteen benchmark communities. But that gap has started to widen slightly in recent years. Being cognizant of not knowing everyone's individual situation and their personal capacity to pay increased taxes, the town offers a variety of programs to mitigate the impact of property tax increases and has aggressively pursued programs that offer tax relief to our most vulnerable citizens. In FY twenty two, the town implemented a new special means tested property tax exemption that was approved by the twenty nineteen annual town meeting. As the twenty nineteen warrant stated, this exemption was for specifically identified group of Hingham seniors, those longtime residents who could who meet certain income and asset criteria to help alleviate an escalating tax burden that could force those on fixed incomes to sell their homes. For more information on any of the tax relief exemptions or programs, or to see if you qualify, please reach out to the Assessing Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Now the Chair of the Board, Bill Ramsey, will walk us through the outreach efforts that the town has made to date.
Thanks, Tom. Slide. Over the last five years, the town has engaged in a comprehensive outreach program to include forty select board meetings, twenty three school committee meetings, almost sixty meetings of our advisory committee, a hundred thirty three building committees meetings in total, seventeen site tours, and eight previous town meeting votes. All of those votes were successful and will bring us to November first when we debate the issue at town meeting. Slide. Just this past summer, we've engaged in additional outreach programs to include a mailer to our residents and hopefully everyone has received. This is the second of three public information sessions. There have been four tours scheduled for the Foster School, five for the North Fire Station and Police Station and Senior Center, ten web based videos answering questions about each project. There have been eleven hundred visitors to our town meeting page that speak specifically to the special town meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Bill. So to wrap up, we'll now briefly go over what to expect both at town meeting on November first and at the ballot on November eighth. Slide. At town meeting, we will have three articles on the warrant, and they will be in this order. The elementary school, public safety facility, and the third article that would create and fund a dedicated stabilization fund to help offset the tax impact of these projects. Slide. As we've discussed, both projects will be considered at the special town meeting and the state election ballot. This slide shows what the ballot will look like. The questions for these projects are on the backside of the ballot and identified as questions five and six. Slide. For both the, for both ballot questions, a yes vote will allow the town to borrow funds and raise taxes to build, to build the project, and a no vote will not authorize the town to borrow funds to build. That's both for the Foster School and slide. For question six, for the public safety facility. That's true of both questions. And slide. So that's our presentation. I hope it was informative, and I'll now turn it back to Chairman Ramsey.
Great. Thank you, Tom, and my appreciation to the panelists who spoke this evening. Before I open up the forum for public questions, I do want to recognize that we have George Danus, who's the Chair of the Advisory Committee, who's going to offer a couple of remarks. George, go ahead.
He's coming in, Bill.
All right, how does that sound?
Very good. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Tom. So let me just take a few minutes to talk about AdCom and the process that we've gone through on these two articles. First of all, the the two capital spending articles that we will consider and vote on November first as a town represent the most significant capital investment projects in the history of our town. Let me take a minute to describe the AdCom process and what we went through to evaluate and ultimately vote in favor of these projects. First, both projects have a long history with AdCom. As Bill mentioned, we have had one or both of these projects on our agenda on a total of fifty nine different times. Over the course of these meetings, we have developed an understanding of the size, the scope, and the need for these projects. AdCom has supported and recommended these projects through every stage of the process to date. And as I mentioned earlier, we have unanimously voted in support of the articles that the town will vote on November the first. Once plans for the special town meeting were announced, AdCom began the process of reviewing the proposed articles. To facilitate this process, AdCom members were assigned to serve as liaisons to the building committees for each project. The liaisons helped to evaluate the projects, looking for areas of concerns or other issues. They also coordinate all activity between the building committee and AdCom. They present the articles to the full AdCom committee. And they are also responsible for drafting both the common and the recommended motion that is then discussed by the full AdCom. As part of our evaluation process, we have held eight meetings since July on these projects. These meetings have These meetings have included two separate formal sessions with each of the building committees. We also held other meetings where the committee discussed the projects and the draft comments. Also, in recognition of some permitting issues on both projects, AdCom members regularly attended sessions of the planning board and the conservation commission. Finally, in recognition of the cost of these projects, AdCom requested a presentation on financing options from Tom and Michelle. After going through this process, AdCom voted unanimously in favor of these projects. Thank you, Bill.
George, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I'm going to open it up to public questions. If you have any questions or comments and you raise your hand, I'm going to ask the moderator to unmute you. And I see Diane Denapoli has her hand up. And I'm going to ask participants, if you could just state your name and address when you are recognized. Go ahead, Diane.
Diane Denapoli, 16 Gardner Street. Thank you, everyone. Very informative. This, I have a question for Michelle, actually. On slide 58, the numbers you present there, does that assume the $7 million is transferred for fund balance? Or is that, are those numbers just not, you know, not assuming fund balance transfers?
Thank you for the question, Diane. Yes, the numbers, the projections that we put out there do include the $7 million from fund balance in our estimates.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks for the question, Diane. Does anybody else have any questions? Or I do see Anne Fenton, go ahead.
Now you can hear me.
You can.
Given the fact that these are two separate questions at both town meeting and at the election, what happens from the financial point of view with the one that does not pass? And let's assume, for the sake of argument, that it comes back the year following or the year following that. I'm asking what happens from a financial sense, not in terms of how it would impact the projects themselves and the users of those projects. And I meant to start by thanking all of you who made this presentation and many others for the work that you've put into doing so.
Well, I'll take a stab at that, Anne. Thank you, and thank you for the question. If, in terms of the financial impact, if a project wasn't to pass, it just wouldn't mean that we would borrow for that particular project, and there would not be the property tax increase related to the borrowing related to those projects. So let's say one of them passed and one didn't. We would definitely borrow for that particular project and go forward with construction on that project. If neither of them passed, then we wouldn't borrow and residents would not incur the property tax increase. Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm thinking more about strictly the financial impact burden on the taxpayers. Obviously, if one doesn't pass, then that added additional tax will not occur. But is there anyone present in the presentation that could give me a sense as to whether, let's, for sake of argument, say, the building, the police and fire building did not pass, could it be brought back again? I know you're going to probably not want to address that question, but please do if you possibly can. Could it? And would it cost more? Probably yes, two years from now. But would it help with a tax burden that clearly is going to, the impact of which is clearly going to influence the vote by putting off one, just for example, say, two years?
If one did, well, if the, let me take both projects, I'm going to break that up. If the, if the school did not pass, the issue would be that we would lose the MSBA funding, which, as Ray discussed, would be worth about $25 million.
Yes, that I can see, yep.
We would lose that funding for that project. Could the project come back at a later time? It could. Also, could the public safety building come back at a later time? It could. But I think your, the start of your question is correct. The cost associated with building those projects would probably increase if they were to come back to voters.
Okay, you make a good politician. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Diane, you handed stuff. Do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry, I just didn't put it down. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. No problem at all. Scott Stevenson. Good evening, Scott. If you could state your name and address. If we could unmute Scott, that'd be great.
How's that?
I can hear you, Scott, go ahead. I could hear you. Scott, are you unable to unmute on your end? Okay, looks like we're having, oh, there you go. We got you now, Scott, go ahead.
Okay. Has the town committed itself to?
Name an address, please.
Sure, Scott Stevenson, 133 HMS Halsted. Has the town committed itself to expanding the senior center into the area that's going to be vacated by the police? Or is the town willing to consider alternatives such as a separate freestanding building on another site for the senior center?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll take that question. So we are certainly looking at the possibility of expanding within town hall. As Joe mentioned, I think in his presentation, which would give us a 15,000 square feet. But we're going to look at other options as well. If, certainly, we need to look there first to see if that's a possibility. But I think, you know, as we continue discussion going forward, we would, you know, look at other sites if other sites are better as well. But that definitely is our primary look at this point. Does anybody else have any questions?
Bill, this is Arthur. I'm not seeing any hands raised, and there are no questions in the chat either.
I don't see any questions, and you said there are no questions in the chat? And let me just keep him, oh. I do see one, is it Tiana?
Hi, sorry, the chat has been disabled this entire time, just so you guys know.
My apologies, thanks for letting us know that.
Yep.
Do you want to ask a question?
Oh, sorry, was that for me?
Yeah, do you want to ask a question? Or do you want to notify us of the chat issue?
Well, both, actually. I did have a question. There was the one slide where it breaks down the the cost of the elementary school project. The project management line for, I think it was $16 million, seems very high. I guess I'm just wondering if you guys could break that down a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to turn that over to Ray Estes.
I can, I can speak to it, and then I can also maybe have my OPM come in and talk to it as well. Can you put that slide up? Is it possible to put that slide up? I think it was 53? Or 52? Yeah, I think it's 52. Right, so it's design and project management. So first, the MSBA kind of sets guidelines and caps for, you know, things that we call soft costs, right? That includes design and project manager, that includes legal fees, anything that's not actually physically going toward the physical construction of the building is generally considered a soft cost. There are percentages and proportional amounts that are, you know, set by the MSBA as guidelines. And we also then negotiate contracts with both the designer and the OPM. These numbers are in line with both the guidelines set by the MSBA as well as the size and scope of this project. Chris Carroll, who is from PMA, I wondered if he might have or maybe gene even more of an answer. Not hearing.
I think I'll just take a minute, Ray, for Art to bring them into the meeting.
Fair enough.
I'm sorry, Ray. Who do you, who would you like to bring in?
Chris Carroll.
I see him, wait one.
There's Chris.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Evening, Chris Carroll, PMA Consultants, and also 18 Bremer Circle. Ray, to your point, the designer fee typically across MSBA projects is in the range of about 10% of construction costs. And the OPM fee is in the range of about 3.5% of the construction costs. The soft costs also include the FFNE, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, as well as third-party testing. We'll have to monitor the contractor's progress, soil compaction, any type of inspectional services that are needed during construction. And I think that's kind of the highlights of the cost, but it's typical across the MSBA projects and the MSBA caps is at 3.5% on the OPM side and 10% on the architect side.
Thank you, Chris.
Diana, thank you for the question. Scott, I see your hand up. Did you have another question? Okay, thanks, Scott. Did anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to note that the chat is now enabled if anyone wants to submit by that means.
All right, I don't see any up. Let me, let me wait a couple of seconds here, see if anybody else wants to ask an additional question. Okay, I don't see any hands up, and I do not see any questions entered into the chat room. Art, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I want to, I want to thank everybody for their participation tonight. I want to thank all the panelists. Want to thank Art Robert for setting this up this evening. I also want to thank all of the members of the public who participated and listened into the presentation. With that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion had been made and seconded. All those in favor, by roll call, Liz.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. We are adjourned. Hope everybody has a great evening. Great rest of the week. Take care, everybody. Thank you.